Good evening, everyone. I will now call this meeting to order at six oh five P M. And we'll begin with the lectures.
The lectures.
My knowledge of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lawrence Bill's all been signed?
Yes, sir.
Um, approval of the agenda?
Make the motion approve the agenda?
Just like that. All in favor? Absolutely. Um, approval of the minutes of the last meeting? Do you have?
Or is it?
Do you want a table?
Table.
Candle table, that for next? Um, and then we'll be moving into the town administration review update.
Um, just two items or I guess just one. Uh, just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, we have our Thanksgiving dinner next week. Uh, it's Thursday and if anyone is interested in coming, um, hors d'oeuvres are at noon and meal is served at one. And we still have, um, a couple of baskets. If anybody needs one, um, let me know. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have one more thing. I knew I had to. Um, so the chair of the, uh, Warren Finance Committee reached out to me today. Uh, let me know that, uh, she wasn't able to meet, uh, to make tonight's meeting. Um, I put a copy of the documents in her box and she indicated that she would review the film. Uh, there was some conversation, uh, back and forth between us about next week's meeting. Um, there are a couple of members of the finance committee that have holiday plans. Um, so it's going to be my, um, recommendation to the board that the select boards still meet, that we remove the budget items from the agenda. We've got lawn care, some Article forty threes, uh, the capital plan. We've got some miscellaneous things that we can clean up. Um, but in effort to make sure that they don't miss anything, we'll just, um, go to December third for the next budget meeting. Um, just to make sure that we can have as many here as possible.
That makes sense.
Good?
Okay.
Well, I'll send an email out when this is done.
Thank you very much. Um, next we'll move into liaison updates, beginning with Ed.
I'm all set.
Okay, John?
Um, yeah, so Saturday Mary Grant had a meeting and they went over, you know, the pluses and minuses of how their pumpkin carving went. Um, and they did some brainstorming on getting more involvement with the town and the kids. So they're gonna start kicking around a few ideas for how to get more people to come out to Mary Grant or, you know, even doing something here. Um, so that was, it was a re- that was a really good meeting. I have some put preliminary dates to maybe get our mini splits done.
To get our what?
To get our mini splits done.
Oh, good.
Between Town Hall and, uh, fire station. They're waiting to hear back and they were supposed to hear back from Efficiency Main this week. But right now I have December ninth, tenth, and eleventh scheduled as possible dates to have the installation done. Once I find that out for sure, I'll let everybody know. And, uh, we'll move on with that. I'll tie it up. That's it.
Awesome. Tom?
Um, the Conservation Forest Committee met, uh, last night. Uh, they reviewed and appreciated the effort and support from the board to bring in Fish and Game or inland fisheries, I guess is what it's called, inland fisheries, to assist in, um, managing, um, some of the, uh, issues we have on, on the Hebo Highville lot owned by the town. They've also are doing some signage, uh, or looking at areas to do signage. Apparently there's, uh, um, an outlet stream from Wilson Lake to Horn Pond. Um, that, I didn't know we owned a piece property yet.
Was that, is that the one we just bought?
No, not the one.
Okay.
Um, in any event, they're putting some signs up on properties and, uh, they'll get in touch with us a little bit more. But this is, they were talking about a stream that, that comes out of Wilson or into Wilson. There's a narrow strip of property that, that's not the one we just bought. This is something else.
I did mine.
It gets the one right next to the fence right beside New Bridge Road.
Oh, so it is the one?
It's the one we just bought.
No, that one's over on near, the one we just bought, I thought was over by the Wilson boat launch.
Yeah, but that stream comes up over there by the, uh, one.
By the horn.
Yeah.
Behind Nomi, Nomi, uh, Misha's house.
Yeah, behind Nomi, yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna do some signage there. Um, with regard to finance, spending most of our time developing budgets, we, uh, spent some time looking at, um, the municipal budget today. We went through everything other than salaries and benefits. Um, and with regard to salaries and benefits, we're gonna have to take a position sometime here on what kind of salary increase we think is appropriate for town employees. Um, I've asked Jennifer, and I don't, I think you've gotten it, to contact the school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to know what their, uh, staff, not teachers, but staff, are scheduled to get for increases, uh, whether it's step or sort of cost of board increases. Personally, I think we should, you know, try to model ourselves out of that. Inflation and cost of increases are the same whether you're working at the school, in the cafeteria, or you're working here in Town Hall, or at the transfer station. So, uh, Jennifer's.
I do have it.
You do have it.
I do, yes.
So, um, I think it's an appropriate place to benchmark ourselves. Um, 'cause I, I don't think we should be treating town employees, which includes the school, have two separate classes of employees when it comes to compensation increases. I think they should all be on the same page. So, uh, uh, are you gonna do that now or you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you just after this conversation.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I would leave the teachers out of that, Jennifer?
Yes, yeah.
'Cause that's a separate category.
Sure. Uh, so support staff, which are the techs, the custodians, cafeteria, front office staff, um, are getting four point five six percent increase, plus thirty-five cents for each step. Uh, administration is getting three point five percent this year.
Administration would be the, what I would call senior administration at the school, the superintendent, perhaps the director of finance.
What was that number?
Uh, office staff, cafeteria, custodians, it's four point five six.
What was the other number?
Thirty-five cents per step and administration is three point five percent.
So, I, I just think it's appropriate for us to keep that in mind as we, um, 'cause we're gonna have to talk about that at a future meeting, okay? Great, great. So we've been, uh, we went through the municipal budget. I think we made a lot of progress on that. Uh, that's gonna be coming out probably next Friday. Is that right, Jennifer?
Uh, so probably Wednesday with the holiday.
Wednesday with the holiday, so we'll share it with the one in the finance committee at that time. Um, and we also, uh, we also got a note from the auditors. They are substantially complete.
Correct, for the town.
No, for the town. No audit adjustments, uh, no remaining questions. I think they're just gonna put the finishing touches on that. So we should have the town financial results. They didn't give us the date, but I would imagine they'll be coming, uh, fairly soon. I don't think they've started the school yet and we're not quite sure what that issue is. It may be something similar to what we found ourselves, the position we found ourselves in a couple of years ago, where the town's audit got delayed for one reason or another. Um, so, uh, that could end up delaying our filing of our reports per statutory requirements and we'll have to deal with that, uh, as best we can. That's all I have.
Great, some red updates?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I don't have anything on the cemetery committee, road committee. We met the other night, we didn't have a forum, so, uh, that's why you didn't see it on T V. Uh, you do whatever. Uh, I did have a couple of discussions with, um, Mr. Warren and, uh, he is, he is working right now, trying to line up something with A W A. Have him come in and speak with us about possibly, uh, doing something different than the Article forty-three and having A W A be kind of our direct point. So, uh, so, yeah. Um, so, even though we did have a meeting, um, I got a little bit of information anyways, I know. So, uh, at least we're working on it, feel good about that. Municipal grounds, I think probably everybody can tell that we're missing some trailers out there. So, uh, we probably oughta just, we oughta find something there that we can put in front of that power thing so don't get run over this one up.
Look out.
How about you?
A what, what?
To, to put for the electric?
Yeah, I just, I don't know, maybe, um, call and have those little, like they put in front of, um, propane cans, you know, a little barrier, little, little one.
Yeah, the little ones that are like cones.
Yeah, or, you know, actually, you know what? I've got a, I've got a frost brose I can bring up. Uh, I got a spare frost brose, so I'll just bring up a four foot frost brose and put it beside, just so that's not blown away in this one up. And, um, I'm gonna pick it up or something.
Did I, did I see they dropped some melons up at the?
They did, yeah.
They did, so.
Yeah, they dropped off three or four loads of melons. Uh, I told them where to put it, uh, I told them I would spread it when I get to it, probably froze it before I get to it.
So that's gonna be for that back lot?
Yeah, we could, we, we can use some of them, uh, if I have to take some and bring it up to the other, uh, but I'll probably do that this spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be the best thing to do is do it in the spring so we got a product there that's, uh, good for the summer.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, so I thought it was pretty cool that they dropped those off. I tried squeezing more out of them, but eh, boy.
That was a good plan.
Yeah, so, uh, I gotta give Mr. Dennis a call, see what's going on out here with the, uh, monitoring. Other than that, I, uh, I have nothing for those.
Thank you. Um, planning board has a meeting tomorrow. Um, Nelson Day Coalition met again for the second budget meeting this past Monday. Um, and I have no updates for the rec committee.
How is their budget looking, Nelson Day?
The rec budget, the, the coalition, um, it's going up a little bit. So they had it, last year they put in dredging for about, I would say like twelve thousand dollars, but this year they know it's about like twenty thousand, so it's gonna be going up like three thousand dollars.
Twelve to twenty?
Yeah, it, it was severely underestimated.
So eight thousand would be divided by the towns? That's not per town, it's?
No, that's, that's the overall cost. Um, so they're taking, they didn't use any of that capital money, so they're rolling that over, so we're only raising it like?
So we pay, uh, uh, I guess like a quarter, yeah, a quarter.
That growth, I see.
Okay.
But that's so, that's a little bit of a.
Two thousand dollars, probably, yeah.
Um, and, yeah, so no updates on the rec. And with that, we will move on to department head and committee chair updates. And then the department heads and committee chairs. Seeing none, we will move into.
Are you, John, you looking, no?
No.
Okay, good.
Get ready. I said, you just get ready.
Um, we have no old business, so we'll straighten to new business with our budget revocation, beginning with our annual control.
So, um, our annual control officer who has the youngins at home, so I put him first. I was running a few minutes late from his parent teacher conference. So, um, if we can invite the Warren Finance up and, uh, the one at the transfer station, he should be here by second round. Try to get him to, like, yeah. So, yeah. So they are ordered when I thought we were gonna present. All right, we ready for John?
Hey, everyone, my name's John Rulo, I'm superintendent of the transfer station. And I'm hoping for the budget that we're requesting.
So if you need your packets, um, they are put together for the order that we had intended. Welcome, Brandon. Um, so just flip to your third page and you'll see the transfer station.
Do you have anything about the?
Nope, go right now. Yeah, so then you'll see, um, that all of the salaries, social security, benefits, all of that, um, with all the budgets is gonna be blanked. So he's gonna start off with his general supplies.
Okay. So our current budget is twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, we wanted to raise that to four thousand dollars. Um, I believe last year we were one thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars over. Uh, we're currently for this year, for this fiscal year, we're now at one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So, uh, for that, for that reason, the amount. Products that we need, things like paint, uh, hearing protection, you know, cleaning products, water, towels, ink printer, and to that nature. It is a little bit of a jump, but, um, as I said last year, you look at all the, uh, next is heating, heating fuel. Uh, last year was, uh, excuse me, it's two thousand right now. We're asking for the same amount. I believe we used so.
What kind of fuel is that gas?
I'm sorry?
Is that propane?
Propane. We have two tanks on the, on the back end of the recycling.
Because twenty-five was a total of twelve forty-six, one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars.
Right.
So, um, is there any reason why we shouldn't trim that budget?
I think that we can.
I know we're only talking a couple hundred bucks, but why not?
Sure.
Take it down to fifteen hundred dollars.
I mean, we could, it's, it's one of those things that we generally like to see a couple of, you know, cold winters. I mean, we had, you know, fairly mild, I just hate to cut it.
Wasn't more.
Last year as far as the temperature and the propane went up. I'd rather see you cut it somewhere else. I mean, that's one of the things that, you know.
It's trying to predict the weather, so.
How do others feel about it?
All of that?
John, you don't have, uh, you're not burning, um, the second hand oil anymore?
No, no. Our oil gets picked up.
Did away with that?
I'm sorry?
You guys did away with that furnace?
Yes, yeah, it's doing fine right now. As a matter of fact, I sent a message to, uh, Luke to come by. Set up a time to, um, go ahead and clean it out, make sure, you know, maintenance on it. So more proactive than reactive if it breaks. So I'm, I don't, I can't tell you the last time it was serviced or cleaned or anything. It should be done.
That's the oil furnace?
Should be, yeah. That's, all right, that's for the propane. Okay.
I'd like to suggest we lower it to seventeen fifty, just, I know it's only a couple hundred bucks, but it's the kind of thing we should be doing with all these budget lines. So, uh, any objection?
Why are we talking?
Heating fuel, heating fuel, uh, drops seventeen fifty.
Yep.
Okay.
We have a contingency if we need.
Exactly, we won't let you go cold.
Oh, I know, we'll call Tom and have him come over.
All right, keep going.
Okay, employee training, uh, we have a thousand dollars for this year and, uh, we're looking for the same amount.
So other than the one training up north, do you, is that, because I feel like the last few years, you had a little different superintendent. It's only been the one training?
That's correct, it's a training pro- program, uh, all about waste management. It's in Rockport, uh, I was fortunate enough to attend. This past April was very helpful. Um, it was a two or three day event. And I, I actually don't remember how much we spent on.
Six sixty-eight.
Okay.
So do you think we could go to seven fifty if we've done the same one training every year?
I was gonna ask, is there, does that include safety training?
I'm sorry?
Do you do safety training here and is that an appropriate thing to focus on?
No, we do. Um, an example of that would be the mercury light bulbs every once in a while. Maybe once a month, maybe twice a month. I'll sit down with the, the folks at the transfer station, I'll go over something informative, educational type of thing.
That's not coming out of the slide.
No, there's no expense.
No, no, there's no, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry?
There's no expense to that.
No expense to that.
Like the in-house sexual training, all that, all tagged out?
No, I'm talking though, uh, you know, there's some, uh, there's some lifting and it, it, those are jobs that could be, uh, people could find themselves being injured with and whether or not we've done all the training we should have to make sure we avoid that.
We are due for more yearly training, but there will be an expense for it. It's something that we do here through the projector. We've done it before.
Oh, okay.
With, yeah, that's insane.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah. But that could go down to seven fifty if we're, if that's the only training class that we go to.
Yeah.
All right.
Back up just a little bit, John, I was gonna ask this question, I forgot. Do you still take second hand oil at the transfer station?
Yeah, yeah, we, it's a two hundred and fifty gallon container. Um, once it's almost full, we call, um, Jim Fraser. He comes and picks it up and sees that tank and he uses it. And there's no, there's no.
Does it, what's the cost to get rid of that?
Nothing.
Okay, good.
Really?
No, he's insured and there's no cost to the channel. And so we're, you know.
I don't think it would be, everybody's looking for that.
No, 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 we keep them happy.
Yeah, yeah, I get rid of a, a four hundred gallons a year.
Okay.
All right. Uh, fees and permits, we have nine hundred and fifty dollars. That's, uh, perfect. I think we're about maybe twenty dollars off from, uh, from nine hundred and fifty. I think it was a little bit less than that, so we're asking for a thousand dollars. Um, next one is compact repairs. So we have a fifty-five hundred dollar budget and we're looking in the future to have the same amount.
Oh, so there's nothing, so there's no budget number there? All right, so we'll just move that, we're gonna assume that was just an error?
I think we, what we did was we combined a couple, we combined the compactor and, um, what did I want to say? Compactor, I don't know.
See, I have lines, just wanna make sure that, so building repair, maintenance, equipment, I mean, none of them went up, fifty-five hundred dollars. So we'll double check, so you wanna have that same fifty-five hundred, I'll make sure, we'll make sure it's in some way or worst case, it gets added to that line. So as we go down through, we'll see if we find it somewhere else?
Yep. Okay? Uh, on electricity?
Oh, pine trees, good though.
Oh, excuse me, no, pine tree is, uh, corrupt.
Yeah, so tell them why you got rid of the line.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So pine tree and, uh, trianna were removed from the budget and that it was, uh, because we signed a contract for, for waste management now. We started that, uh, July first and so.
So we've, we've re-categorized them to just solid waste collection and demo collection.
Right.
So we're no longer calling them by the company name, we've just separated them to it too.
So, yeah, before there were three line items. There was one for demo and there was one for, um, the hauling and one for processing of the waste. So the processing of the waste, M S W, and the hauling have been combined into one. Uh, electricity, did I, electricity for five hundred? Um, I believe we used last year four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, a primary, uh, I guess the most, these machines that we run with electricity is just very expensive and they're constantly going on and on and on.
And the rates have been increasing as well, right?
They have, yeah.
So you think you got enough here with the, with the rate?
Yeah, that's why I, that's why I bumped it up to a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, telephone, that's a set price and, uh, we're asking for the same amount.
And just to update the, the board and the finance committee, I have started my meeting, sorry.
Uh, no, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, we, it's not the same as, it was eleven fifty.
Much higher, yeah.
Yeah.
So as I told you last week, I did start my meetings, I had met yesterday with Breeze Line. Um, we're starting to meet with Breeze Line on Comcast, see what they can do to get law, get rid of the landline and switch from the analog to the, an internet based, um, so we're still hopeful that before the budget moves forward. Um, I can tell you that Breeze Line offered, um, from our hundred and eighty-two dollars that consolidated, went up to, to twenty-nine ninety-nine per line. So it's extremely, extremely cheap. However, our good friends at the town of Shapley, uh, switched to Breeze Line and are having a lot of trouble with them. So we are, you know, we've basically said to Breeze Line, let's go ahead and fix all the Shapley's problems and then come back and we'll talk about it, you know, what you have to offer, so we're still looking into it.
Uh, for building repair, um, looking for thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we didn't spend that much in our last budget, um, but I'm planning on doing that this year. We, we were running over budget last year when I took over, uh, back in November. And so one of the things we did was we, uh, tried to hold off on some things as far as spending. And so now that we have this budget, things like, uh, we have a roof that's leaking in a couple of places. For our, the garage door openers, the motors, we have two of those. Um, they're at least fifteen years old. Uh, some of the doors are shaking, we don't want anybody to get hurt or anything of that nature. We need some welding done on a couple of the, excuse me, on one of the containers that we have for universal waste. We need some fencing repaired, so there's a number of different things that we wanna do there.
We're gonna try to get a couple of things done this year if we can?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yep. So the next one is, uh, M S W. This is the one that was previously.
Equipment repairs and maintenance.
Excuse me?
Equipment repairs and maintenance.
Oh. I bet, sorry. Uh, two thousand dollars, this is for, I need to, uh, I need to correct this, I put, uh, skid steer here. And I didn't mean to do that, but, uh, this is for the gla- gap glass crusher. Um, anything that breaks down, that's mechanical, uh, any type of maintenance that's needed. And that's what this one is worth.
So a question I have is, I, I'm one of these guys there when we go through all this stuff and I see stuff that looks like the same line, but in a different spot. So you have, um, compact repair and maintenance, but then you have equipment repair and maintenance. Same thing, isn't it?
Right. Um, I, I can't remember, I think if we split out the compactor by itself.
For, I just wanna know if there's a reason why you did that. I mean, myself, I would think that they would be combined that way there. If you have a large maintenance thing on the compactor, you wouldn't be reached. But I guess at the end of the day, I guess it doesn't really matter, you did drop, you didn't pay for it, the accounts anyways, but.
Right.
It just makes more sense out of one line.
We should probably add that fifty-five hundred to the equipment repair instead. So if you don't end up having anything go wrong with the compactor, but a different piece of equipment goes wrong, you've got the extra money to use for either of them.
Yeah, your hand, your handcuffing yourself with that one line.
Yeah, we kinda, we kinda put ourselves in a bad situation last year. We, although we waited to do the maintenance on the compactor, which was a three thousand dollar job, I believe, is how much they charge. When they came to do that maintenance, they found that a couple hydraulic hoses were rubbing up and, you know, um, frame, possibly, so, uh, they came and replaced those. And that was an additional few thousand dollars.
Yeah, so by combining those two together, I mean, it's all equipment. It's top, it's equipment of the thing, you just, you separate, it's like having a line just for the skid steer.
Right, right.
So.
No, that's great, I, it's.
All right, so we're gonna make, so we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of the five oh four sixty, the compact repairs and maintenance. We're gonna take that fifty-five hundred and add it to the two thousand in equipment repairs. Is that what you wanna do?
Yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be some seventy-five hundred?
John, the compactor, there's been discussion about a second compactor?
Yes, that's correct, um.
Does this budget cover the potential cost of a second contract?
No, sir, there's nothing in here in the budget regarding that.
We're still, we're still going through the pricing and stuff. That's not the budget season. Right, I, I don't believe so.
And when we do do it, it'll be its own one article, just in case it doesn't pass.
Well, the compactor, the, the equipment expenses, the repairs, maintenance toward that.
Right.
I'm just wondering if you included any extra forty. First year shouldn't be any issues anyways.
Exactly, yeah, first year would be under warranty anyway.
Typically, when we do something like that, we'll, the warrant, the article will cover the cost of acquiring the item. But we probably should also include the maintenance cost in, in that article so that it's clear what the one-time costs are and the ongoing costs.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be good.
So we're pushing to do that for this year or not?
Well, I don't think we know what's gonna happen.
If we get the numbers together, but I don't know if we can.
Yeah.
We'll see, we'll see what the tax rate looks like. Exactly.
All right. Uh, five oh five, five oh one, you see, yeah, this is the, um, M S W in hauling and it's, we're asking for ninety-two thousand dollars.
Have any idea where you're gonna come up this year? 'Cause that's what you, you've got a ninety-two thousand dollar rate for two thousand twenty-six.
It's, no, I, I, I don't, I mean.
So remember we just signed the contracts July first? So this is with a brand-new company, it's with a brand-new, you know, we made a lot of changes. Um, so we're sticking with the same numbers until we can get through a solid year of exactly what happened to new hauling rates, the new demo rates, um, and the tonnage.
You know how many tons you put, you saw last year?
Oh, yeah, and that's one thing I, that I did and, uh, I didn't bring it with me unfortunately, but I looked at the first three months, uh, that we had used, uh, waste management and I bumped that against what we had, uh, pre- prior to that. And, uh, but it, it doesn't give me a full picture, but you're right, but I can take, I can take the tonnage.
You should be able to take the tonnage and, you know, roughly how many halls, whatever. And you'll come up with an idea. And if you do that, I mean, are we shooting the moon with this number or are we?
Let's see what we can do to, to, you know, to verify this is a good number for this year and do we feel comfortable for next year. for this year and do we feel comfortable for next year. Also, there's a new tax going in by the state of New Hampshire that um, has, that will be placed on haulers. Um, is that right, John?
MSW?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, uh, three dollars and fifty cents a ton.
Okay, so we should have that estimated and provided for in here. Do you know when that's going into effect?
Uh, January first.
January first.
We, we, we have to pay that?
Oh, but they're gonna pass it off to us.
They're gonna, and that's, yeah, and the waste management company, they contacted us, I believe they sent you a message, or it's me, did he give us a heads up? It's uh, he announced, yeah, Delsman has, hasn't happened yet.
Do we have any idea what that would cost? Three fifty a ton, like, how many tons do we do?
About thirty-five dollars per haul. If it's, if it's ten ton per container.
And you got how many hauls? Like a hundred? Yeah, you have, what do you got?
For MSW?
Yeah.
Well, that's, we do it a year, so a hundred and four is what we've been hauling per year.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Alright. We should just, let's get it in there. Four, all four, twenty-seven, make sure we got that thirty-five hundred or wherever the number should be in there, okay.
John, it was forty-five thousand last year, and you're asking for ninety-two this year. What's the difference in the number? Is it the hauling is added in this year?
Yeah, the two are combined, prior to, prior to the switch over, um, we had one line out in for triano and one for uh, pine, pine tree.
So the forty-five thousand.
Those two are combined into this one SW, so.
That's why I thought the number looked awful high, that's why I thought you were gonna shoot. Forty-five thousand last year was strictly the tipping fee.
Yeah.
Now, the ninety-two is the tipping fee plus the transportation.
Exactly.
Pine tree last year was eighty thousand as actuals, and solid waste was forty-five. So that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so now combined, we're coming up with ninety-two thousand dollars. Am I doing that right?
Yeah, because there was, there was savings.
So, those savings we said were gonna be there are making.
That's where it was twenty-eight dollars.
And, and these two numbers, I just wanna remind you that when we went out to beta, we did that spreadsheet of every single load, these are actual numbers, so we're, you know, these, these were based on the amount of loads in the twenty-five.
I apologize, I didn't realize they were both together, because it looked like you doubled the bucket away. I'm confused here, I thought we were getting a better deal.
Oh, we are.
Alright.
Uh, off to demo, this was a big hitter for, uh, costly item for us last year, um, the number we're asking for is one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So, where are you trending this year? What do you think this year's number? Cause in two thousand twenty-five, it was a hundred and eight thousand.
Right now, at, up until the end of September, we spent twenty thousand four hundred dollars. That's for, no, let's see. That's for three months.
That's three months during the summer?
Right.
Which is a heavy period?
Exactly, and that number, and.
So, so, fourth, that's a quarter. So, four times that would be eighty thousand. There's something else going on here.
The hauling.
The hauling is a lot.
The hauling did that out.
No, so the hauling's included in that.
Waste management does the hauling also.
Can we just get a little detail on this?
We'll break it down for you.
Yeah, we could have a breakdown.
It's the biggest number.
It is.
Okay.
Uh, universal waste, this is our TVs, computers, laptops, anything electronic like that. Last, we spent thirteen hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, out of sixteen hundred, so I'm asking for two thousand, which is because of inflation. Uh, let's see, we're five oh five fifty-six for metal, uh, we're asking for thirteen thousand.
Is this the hauling fee?
I'm sorry?
Because you make money on the metal, don't you?
Well, the, the metal is considered, is separate, universal waste is something that we have.
No, I'm talking about metal waste collection.
This is what we're taking, we're paying the company to take it off, on the premises.
My bad, yeah, I was thinking back to.
That's what I was getting at. Don't they, don't they pay us for that?
They pay us a small amount, yes. Ed has some information on that.
We took a universal.
Go ahead, Ed.
We took a universal.
No, we're talking about metal, metal.
So there's two different things, there's two different things going on with the metal. One is a large container. Um, anything like bikes, uh, car parts, anything that's metal, that's steel that goes in there, uh, that's the Punske uh, container, he takes that and yes, we make money on that. He charges us three hundred and seventy-five dollars to haul whatever it's full, that's when I call him to come get it. And of course, he replaces it with an empty one. And uh, what happens at that point is he will drop all that off, and then we get a check, you're right, we make money on that.
Is, is the check generally for more than hauling fee? No?
No, no.
So you have a hauling fee and you have a container rental fee?
Yes.
Can you give us a, can you get us a breakdown of those numbers?
Yep.
Yeah, I feel like just not too, not too long ago, we looked at what we paid out versus what we got in.
So, we did, yeah.
We're in the negative then.
We are definitely in the negative.
In the negative.
And I don't think we should be in the negative on that.
We, we, please, I think that's.
I was gonna say, is that difficult, Ed?
No.
No, so, is something going on with that cost structure here that?
Go back to when I worked in Rollins for doing this, we had a company that supplied the container and the hauling for nothing, or if they took it out of the percentage that we would get. But every time the, the container left, um, we would get a check for two hundred and fifty, three hundred bucks, net.
So the incentive for them to give the free containers, they got the money for the metal.
Yeah, yeah, they figured it out, it was about fifty bucks a, a ton, is what they paid.
Well, right now, if you have to do it for free, it'd be better than what we're doing right now.
Exactly.
Can we, can we look under that?
That will work on us.
And I, and I'm trying not to confuse it, confuse anything, but, or make it more difficult. There is a separate type of metal collection that is also under this account. And that is for car batteries, um, copper, brass, those types of things, aluminum. We try to keep those separate in a container, and uh, those are money makers for us. I don't have a breakdown of how much it is, but that's another, that's another Punske transfer, uh, he hauls, charges us three seventy-five, but we, we make money from that.
So Punske handles all of this for us?
Yes.
The hauling and the selling?
This, the, yes, the, let's see, he, what happens is, they pay Jim, Jim cuts us a check.
I'm sorry?
Yes, the company that he takes them to is paying Punske directly, and then Punske gives us a check.
Yep, and they provide the amount, they provide the amount of tonnage and to, to go with the, what is it, eighty dollars a ton we make from that?
You know, I, personally, I would sit down with Punske and say, look, this, you know, given what Ed is saying is, perhaps the practice, explain to us what's going on here. And I'd just be blunt with him, say, look, we should be making money on this, and instead we're spending ten thousand dollars. Can you explain to us what this is? And let's see what he has to say. I mean, it's the last time there was a real issue about changes and so on, so let's, let's be upfront with him. Tell him what we're, what we're seeing, what our concerns are, and we'll do what the right thing is at that point. Does that make sense, Ed?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, paper.
Paper, cardboard, um, asking for eight thousand dollars. Previous one, we, um, we, we spent uh, six thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Uh, the reason I'm going up on that is just, once again, just trying to adjust it for inflation.
So who takes that off?
Uh, that's Punske.
Okay.
Do we make money on that?
Once, no, we don't actually make money, but it helps us with our bottom line.
What does that mean?
It's paying for expenses.
We get something towards it.
Right.
You, you do sell the cardboard?
Right.
Yes.
Is he doing that on our behalf, or are we doing it ourselves? Is he just hauling, or is he actually?
Just hauling.
He's just hauling?
Yes.
So whatever we can arrange to sell, that's, we're making that arrangements with the buyer.
I'm sorry, one more time.
If, if we're selling anything, whether it's paper or whatever, we should be, pay the hauler, whatever the fee is for that. But if we're gonna be selling something, that's something we should be in charge of. And it should be directly between, unless there's some reason why you can't do this, directly between the town and whoever we're gonna sell it to. There's no need for a third party in there.
Right, and that's, I'm sorry, that's happening today. So, we paid Jim, yeah, we paid Mr. Punske, three seventy-five for the transport.
Okay.
They weigh, they, they weigh the amount of cardboard or whatever, um, they tell us the amount of tons, and to sell it, cuts us a check
Okay.
for the cardboard, the milk plastic, containers, paper, magazines.
Just the metal that Punske pays us directly?
Right, right.
Is there any reason that, that, that metal place doesn't pay us directly like the cardboard does?
I don't know. Nope, I'm just looking.
But, but what I've just described is, you know, whoever the hauler is, that's, that's an arrangement between the town and the hauler.
Right.
If we're able to sell some of this material, that's directly between the town and that buyer. There shouldn't be anybody else involved in that, because it, 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 it doesn't create the kind of transparency we need to understand the, all the ins and outs there. Does that make sense to you?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yep.
So on the cardboard then, you're paying him three seventy-five to haul.
Yep.
What are you paying for the container? Does he charge us for the container that he hauls in?
No, 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 there's no charge for the container. We, we store all of that stuff into one, one of the older trailers that we have, and we'll, we'll fill up, I mean, he could take eight, eight uh, pallets at a time. And so, that's what we do, we, we, we'll wait until we have eight, ten, twelve pallets.
Renting a container for that.
Nope, we are not. He, he will just call me, he'll show up, and I load him up and he goes.
So, if you fill up a container with the cardboard, you take it, roughly, what do you, what, what are we, what are we getting for that, roughly?
Oh gosh, uh, per ton, I don't know, it's top of my head. I can tell you, I can tell you that, I'm sorry, that each of the uh, each of the pallets weighs three quarters of a ton. So if we put eight on there, but uh.
Do you think you're getting at least three seventy-five thousand?
Are we breaking even?
Uh, I, I believe so, but I'll need to double check. I probably have it over there, but.
So, we'll start back on some of our.
I'm sorry.
I, I think with these kinds of arrangements, whether it's hauling or selling of, of waste material, it, it's useful to have relationships in other towns. And to be able to pick up the phone and call and say, hey, this is what we're getting for cardboard. Does that sound right? How's that, how are you doing? And it's just unofficial, just, you know, without going through a bid process and so on. It will tell you whether or not there's potential for some improvement, and to that informal network. And if you get comfortable with it, great. If it looks like, hmm, maybe we might get what we should, then, then we can do something more formal. Does that make sense, John?
Yep, sure does. I can do some more, I mean, I, I met some folks from various transfer stations in April. Um, I haven't had the opportunity to go to their transfer stations, but um, and I don't have the information in front of me. But um, they do things.
But just to go pick up the phone and call and say.
How do we do it? How do they do it? Do they get you more money for it? Are they doing it better?
Cause they'll do it to you too, which is great, and they get that informal network, yeah, okay, alright.
Off the tie?
We gotta handle it.
I'm sorry?
In general, I've, I've heard a couple of times now about inflationary adjustments. And um, when you go from sixteen hundred up to a two thousand, it's twenty-five percent, which is well above inflation. And I didn't know, I would think there'd be some general guidelines on what we're trying to do if we're doing inflationary adjustments, which would be a lot less than a twenty-five percent increase versus the town's growing and the, these miscellaneous expenses are also growing in conjunction with inflation. But it's hard for me to rationalize a twenty-five percent increase for inflation.
Which one are you speaking about?
Universal waste.
Universal waste.
I think that.
Yeah, okay, yes.
I think what I would wanna know is, how are we trending this year? Never mind what the budget is. What do we think the expense is gonna be this year? And if that's coming in at budget, then I think your point is valid. And I'd say, you know, to maybe we don't need, unless there's something about that item that says, well, the costs are increasing outside of inflation, and uh, but. So I think a little more work is needed to figure out what's happening in the current year.
And it's early in the year, so it's.
It's hard to tell.
And it's seasonality too, to it.
The only other thing I would say is four hundred bucks.
I, well, that's the easy answer. When you're talking payroll and everything, um, you don't want me to get into that.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, I couldn't resist, it's like.
Alright, tires, go ahead, John.
Tires, um, we're asking for four thousand dollars.
He went down.
We went, uh, we spent, what's, we used seventeen twenty-nine, we could probably go down some more.
Well, you've used, well, you spent thirty-three last year, you spent seventeen to date, right?
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
So you still have another.
I'm sorry, yeah. So, yeah, we just, so. Any questions on that one? Forty-one. Alright, freon removal. This is, this has jumped up, we've had a quite a large number of air conditioners, refrigerators, things of that nature. Especially in the spring, in the beginning of summer, we have everybody coming back to their camps. Um, and we have a lot of uh, units up there. I wanna say that there are occasions where I've been told, but there's no proof, but people will come to their camp from another place to open it up in the spring. And sometimes they'll bring some refrigerators with them, and some, you know, freezers and things like that from their, from their other state where they live. But there's no, there's no way to control that. And that's gone up as far as the number of that we've gotten. I mean, we paid five, we paid five dollars to have the air conditioners, uh, the freon removed from those, the refrigerator's ten dollars. Um, but, we still probably have about fifty units up on the hill.
This was taken from actuals, we sat down Monday and figured out actuals, so we think it's gonna come in that high.
Once you have the freon removed from the units, what do you do with the units?
Oh, we, we put them in the metal container.
So we should be.
There is all money coming back now.
Right, there, previous to that, um, Robin was having us take the motors out and things of that nature. And so he transported those to a.
Actually, we're losing money on the metal right now, so.
Right.
More metal we haul, the more haul fees we get.
Perhaps it should be that way.
There's no charge, drop-off charge.
What's that?
There's no drop-off charge.
I get that.
No.
I've, I've, I've got a refrigerator, bring it to the dump.
Oh. We don't charge anything for any, anyone that has property here.
No, we were talking about, we, but we get charged to take the freon and stuff out of it.
Five dollars for an air conditioner.
Then we turned around and we threw it in a dumpster, we're paying the three seventy-five to get hauled off, we're losing on that side of it, so.
Yeah, that's why we set up a fee, uh, which.
Or, we find somebody that takes a steel and we all pay for it. It might help on that too, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's a long time ago, but I was just getting rid of a small freezer, and it cost me five bucks to, you know.
Yeah, we're the only ones that, in New York, I believe in New York County that don't charge, does not charge anything. Uh, other transfer stations, washers, dryers, reels, all that stuff they charge.
There, there's one thing I can say, we, we talked about charging, and this, the demo is getting out of hand.
Right.
There's no doubt about it, but, um, you know, I, we got people that always say, we don't, I don't get nothing from my tax money, I don't have kids in the school, blah, 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 blah. At least you can go to the transfer station, dump your stuff off for free, and you got something, you know, so, I mean, um, if the demo is obviously a problem, we'll have to figure that out at some point.
I think we figured that out, Ed.
Well, just give me that.
I think the last time I was here, um, I took those three mu- months, when I did a comparison from last year to this year. And so our demo charge went down seven thousand dollars from what we paid.
There, there are other places in the town of Acton we can cut money, so we don't have to pay to dump out the transfer station.
Say that again?
There's other, other places we can cut money out of, other than the transfer station.
I personally don't think it's, we should be charging those.
It's, yeah, and it's a lot, by the time you borrow employees, that, you know, the receipts and the money, it's a lot.
That's what they pay taxes for. And uh, if we can clean it up and keep people out of it that don't belong there, then.
You've done a good job, Sam.
It sounds like what he's done too.
I think that's a contributing factor as far as the amount of demo that we've been getting.
Is there a limit on how many you can bring per year for, for resident?
No, the only thing we have.
One AC or?
No, no, we don't keep track of that. Um, we probably need a head council to do that, and also collect money if you wanted to do that, but um, no.
Just tires, right?
Yep, tires, eight of them per household.
And that's a really good idea, because we got tires all down Gordon Road and everywhere, you know? That's why they always brought them. You know, I was gonna call it once a year, that, you know, there's twelve tires down on the Gordon Road. So I go down there, get them, throw them in the truck, take them up the transfer station, cause I couldn't do that, I was road commissioner, but, so they always ended up at mattresses.
Yeah, we do that in the month of May, and um, we turn a lot of people away, because they don't live here, they don't own property.
The more you do that, the more people will get the message.
Oh yeah, I think the message is out there. I think this upcoming summer, spring and summer is gonna be much better as far as what we transformed into as far as people on the stairs. Alright, wood shipping, uh, asking for eleven thousand dollars, it's a thousand dollars more than what we've used in the past. I believe the last two times they've come out, it's been a, a flat ten thousand dollars. I'm just, I don't know if he, I don't have any, any way of, of telling you why I'm asking for these.
That number could change. It could be ten thousand, it could be twenty thousand next time.
You never know.
Yeah, whoever bids on it.
I mean, these are large pieces of machinery, and they're expensive to run.
You still, you want that guy in Farmington? No, we changed them this year, didn't we?
Uh, we haven't done it in this year yet, but last year, it's been, it's been the same guy for the last two years.
Last two years.
Oh, okay.
Did we have a guy at like a main somewhere do it?
Yeah.
That's the same guy, it's not the guy from Farmington then.
Huckett's.
Huckett, yeah.
Huckett's.
Yeah. Whatever.
We haven't, no one's done it yet this year, right? We haven't done the woodchipping yet.
No, no, we delayed it.
Stack up the pile more, right?
Right.
Hold on, do a one-shot deal on it.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna get too much more, um as far as tree trunks, I've got trunks, but the the items that need to be processed. So it's mostly in spring and summer. Everybody comes to clean up. If it's been a bad winter and they've got a lot of trees down, we get all that. And we also get people that like to bring, or they don't like to, but uh large root systems that they pull out of the ground, stumps. And so we do our best to catch those, because they get rocks in them and people process them, don't they?
So what do you do with those?
I don't know.
I honestly.
How big a stumps are you taking?
Well, we're not, I mean, if it's a small stump from a tree and the tree's getting thrown out, it's only this big. But like last week, I had a, I had with like six huge, you know, large ones.
Turboing?
Oh, yeah, he would, I mean, he understood, it was just like, I explained it to him, the.
Yeah, you have to, yeah.
The people that process these things, um when they do the woodchipping, they found a lot of rocks down, I mean, large, but large rocks. It breaks their equipment, so they don't like that at all.
Yeah.
So do you not take, we don't take stumps, no?
Oh, okay.
But you should be anyway, you have me approved to do that.
Yeah, but we do have some, I mean, we don't have a person, once you go through the entrance of the transfer station, if you make an immediate left, you're down into the area where the brush pile is and the leaves and all that. So you can have people down there putting more than uh stumps down there. They, you know, I'll find a can of paint down there once, it's just.
Yeah.
I mean, but the only way you could police it was, would be to have somebody there, I don't think that would be.
We're not handing out much trouble at this point.
No, 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 it's, you know, it's not an issue, it's, we do have it, it does happen, but.
Do we have a sign, does it go up there?
Sorry.
Do we have a sign that would indicate, somebody mentioned it out here.
Just to have it down there to say, no, no stumps?
No stumps, whatever, if there are.
Um we could do that, I was gonna talk to Jennifer about signs. Um one of the things that I just did, that's going to uh go into the annual uh book, as far as what we take recycling and things of that nature, it addresses stumps in there, I added that, it wasn't in there previously, as well as some other things, but yeah, we can definitely do some signs. That sometimes you s- I mean, I worked there for almost a year and I never knew that there was a sign with a blue sticker when you pull up to throw your trash in. I just happened to see an owl on that post one day and I was like, damn, and nobody sees it, it's just not big enough, so.
What's it say?
It just, it has a, it has a blue rectangle of a sticker, and it says you gotta have a sticker. But it's, I mean.
People don't.
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
They're not looking out, they're looking down at the dump of the transfer.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, uh grounds fitness.
Grounds up, Kate, yeah, you won four thousand dollars, why?
Well, let's see what we spent before, I'm sorry, I didn't write, oh.
We only spent five fifty-nine, but.
Well, okay, so some things that popped up that we were not aware of, and I don't know that this, this number seems pretty high to me. But um that's going to mow the lawn, all over the area where the.
That was the five hundred, no, this is the trees and the gravel you needed.
Oh, yes, uh we need, thank you, uh we need to have some trees cut. Uh they're coming very close to, it appears that the root system and everything is being washed out. And these trees will probably eventually end up into the recycling center. And so we were already gonna leak up, up on top, actually a couple leaks that I need to get um somebody to fix that.
Was that you were gonna build a maintenance race?
Yes.
Yeah, so we had the tree company go out and take a look to see if they were really a, if they were really um a need, you know, if they, if they would fall on the building, um so that's two thousand and days of work, and they didn't.
So you're gonna have that done? Hold on.
And the rest of it's all the gravel and stuff like that?
Yeah, we're gonna ask for some gravel, uh above the metal container on the hill, it's all dirt.
Yeah, notice that feel of the dirt.
Yeah, all that dirt turns into mud, and we have just a big mess up there.
So you're saying two thousand?
Yeah. Alright. Uh so equipment, this is uh for the skid steer, I spoke to uh somebody this morning, where we purchased our skid steer last year, and uh the maintenance starts at five hundred hours. And the total for that particular service is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. Covers oil, uh fuel, hydraulic, fluid filters, drive changes, wh- whatever those are, as well as a round trip pickup and drop off. I mean, of course, we can, we can bring, bring it ourselves.
So, John, about to cut you off, but I think we have the same problem we just had, another equipment maintenance line.
Right.
Put it all together in one.
Yeah, because if you have an issue with that skid steer, you can buy with three thousand dollars, you're screwed. So you can go back to, if you have all one for equipment maintenance, it's equipment maintenance, it don't matter what it is.
Right.
We're gonna make forty-one, equipment, common repairs or maintenance, and we'll make that forty-five hundred, seventy-five hundred. How's that sound?
It's actually great, and I like, I like the idea of combining.
Yeah, so equipment, common repairs or maintenance, and that will go up to that.
Okay.
You know, when we're combining these lines, John, you ought to keep a record of what, what you expect to spend on some of the key items in that line. So that when you have questions about it, or when the actuals come through, and you'll be able to tell whether or not the budget is, the actuals are trending on budget or not. So uh if there's three big items in there, you ought to know what those are and how much you're. Sorry.
That's alright.
Sorry, it's going crazy, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, you're doing.
I have some hearing aids in my car. I've got my hearing aids in, do it, I'm like, what was that?
Sounds sorry.
I think my tongue.
Yeah, I'm fine, it was a little sensor I have in my arm.
Okay, so we're gonna combine those, I I think that when we do municipal on December third, we'll invite, we'll invite John back and we'll, we'll get this. We'll get some of this point out.
Yeah, I mean, pretty much all you're gonna need to do is, you know, you gotta, you work, you figure you could do for maintenance on the compactor, oil changes, the skid steer.
That's a great idea for mine and all.
Alright, so what's your last two lines?
Uh let's see, we're on mileage right now, um this is five hundred, asking for five hundred dollars. Pretty much this was for uh the last half of the year, which wasn't there for, but uh I use this, um some of this money for the training that would happen after a rock port. So.
Okay.
Uh I also, I mean, this is for going to Booney's, picking up diesel and going to hardware.
So you actually spent eight hundred and twenty dollars in twenty-five, is five hundred adequate?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That, that large amount was because the previous superintendent was taking things to, to New Hampshire to sell.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous expense, uh asking thirty-five hundred. We spent previously two thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is for diesel at Booney's, clothes for our workers, jackets, um let's see, tools, blades, trash bags, um medical supplies. And then the last one is hazardous waste, so.
Oh, that's all I wanted.
Oh, that's skip one?
General supplies.
Yeah, it could be the same.
It should be the same, you got general, you got general supplies.
And miscellaneous.
Yeah, can we combine those?
Yeah, because I mean, yeah, because you're talking about fuel and stuff, that could be taken out of the maintenance line anyways.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just like oil and everything else.
Okay.
And I'm not sure why, um I have to check with the treasurer, but there's a line that he's got that's not on your spreadsheet.
So what I've, what I've, so we got thirty-five hundred dollars set up at that line, and then up here, uh generally, you got four thousand, right? So now you got seventy-five hundred dollars on miscellaneous. You need seventy-five, if you put them together, doesn't it almost take care of the same stuff you were talking about buying before? So we might go to riddle that out a little bit.
Yeah, cause it looks like you spent around a little over six thousand on the two before.
Right.
So there may be some opportunity to bring that down. Am I doing that right, Jenna?
Yeah, you are, because the general supplies, he actually, well, he went over thirty-six and then miscellaneous was twenty-five, so. We'll combine those and see if we can shave a little off it.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's one more item, I don't believe it's on your paperwork there. Uh last year, we had a bunch of hazardous waste, I think there was, we used to have a hazardous waste day or something like that. Anyways, we ended up with fifty-five gallon, fifty-five gallon drum full of whatever was in there, gas, oil, water.
Who knows?
Uh antifreeze, and so of course we can just take that and dump it down the drain. We had to call E P, uh E P S, I think, out of New Hampshire, and that removal for that was fourteen hundred dollars.
How big a, was it fifty-five gallons?
Yeah. Completely full.
It was awful, they charged, they charged us to test it, they charged us.
Oh, they had to go into a scientist to make, it's just like.
Clean Harbors.
Clean Harbor in Portland, yeah, and I did go to them first, but unfortunately they didn't get back to me and it was an error, so.
Ed had a good point though.
They, they, I think they would come.
I was asking, cause I.
I don't know that we'd wanna trap, I don't know that I would wanna bring hazardous waste somewhere.
But when I was talking to Ed about this, we were catching up one afternoon when I met, um what's, we got rid of that big barrel, I thought we weren't taking these anymore, Ed.
We're not.
So why do we need to budget for it?
Well, what I'm doing is asking if we, I guess, asking if we should have money set aside, because already, right now, we have um, we have hazardous waste materials.
So how are we getting them if we're not taking them?
People. No, I mean, you go down, you go down to the goody shack, there's like six cars down there.
So they're just leaving it?
Everybody's doing their thing with the compacters and recycling, and Joe Schmel comes up and he's got three gallons of Prestone antifreeze.
So they're leaving it anyway?
They leave it, we don't, we can't catch it all the time.
Right, that's, that's.
Just like the stumps.
So you're saying you, you wanna put some aside just so that you have to get rid of stuff that.
It's more of an enc- yeah, it's more of an encased type of thing, but like I said, we, we already have stuff. I mean, we don't have fifty-five gallons of it.
At the end of the day, someone's gonna remember, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking that fifty-five, that drum, we could fill that in two years, not necessarily one year.
Mix it oil and antifreeze.
Not oil, no, oil goes um in a separate container, uh is pumped out for heating.
The, the, yeah, the motor oil does.
Right.
When you, you're talking about the other barrel, you say you put antifreeze and what else in there?
Oh, it's just, it can be a number of things, the antifreeze, condensation from water.
Yeah.
Um just anything, paint. And that's why they, they come to pick it up.
Hundred bucks.
Yeah, they have to test all that stuff and it's expensive.
Thank you, sir.
But what do I do with it if I, you know, do I hold a fifty-five gallon drum for five years or?
So you wanna put how much aside for that?
A thousand. It was fourteen hundred.
That got cut off, we don't have that.
Yeah, no, it's not.
It was right on.
Longer, shorter.
No.
Well, if you pull a little bit out of that miscellaneous and the other one, you come up with thousands somewhere, okay, yep.
Like I said, we'll, with the uh the demo and the solid waste, we'll plan on bringing him back on the December third meeting to relook at this.
Be a quick one, just to review.
Yep, be much quicker than we did.
Alright.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Yeah, thanks.
Everybody good?
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Good job, Michelle.
Oh, yeah.
See you Saturday.
Alright, I'll be there.
Next, um we will be having a different station from our animal control officer.
No stories.
Hey, guys.
That's right, gorgeous week. Alright, so this is what they're looking at, so um his is a very clean and short budget, as you can see, the salaries in uh P M L A and all the fees are not calculated, so really the only thing that he's got control over, because the kennel fees are with Kennybug Shelter, the phone is through Verizon, um mileage controls, it's really his miscellaneous line, he's gonna tell you what he wants to buy.
Um I'd like to uh just start off with, I got the new dog box, um I got that in the back of my truck, and that thing is amazing. That thing is everything we've hoped for, um it works great, um it's big, the dogs like it. Um so I'd like to um start off with, I'd like to um get a, it's called a net launcher. Uh it's gonna sound crazy real quick, but it just looks like a flashlight, and I have these problems with chickens that run around, cats that are wicked feral, um even sometimes dogs that won't get, they'll get close to you but not real close, you can't even catch them. Uh this, this net launcher, you hit the button and it just throws like a ten-foot net, and it grabs the chicken, it's harmless. Um and you can repack the nets and put it back in and reuse them.
Spider-Man.
Hmm?
Like Spider-Man.
Yeah, it's like Spider-Man.
Yeah. I could use one of these, I like.
Yeah, it works great, it does, it works great. I haven't used one yet, but I saw the video, it seems to work pretty good. Um.
How much are they?
Uh they're about six ninety-nine uh on eBay.
And the nets reusable or?
Yeah, the nets are, yeah, the net had gotten the whole thing of it.
Yeah.
So what's the gun powered by, is it like?
Uh CO2, the same cartridge, like a pellet gun, same thing, you hit the button and it throws out four weights out and just, boom. And it um comes in a case and it's got four preloaded nets already in it, so if you miss the first one for whatever reason, you gather the next one, lock it in, boom, get them again. Yeah, so other than that, um.
There's, there's no animal safety issues now?
Nope, no, they use them all over the country.
Great.
Yep. Um uh sweatshirts, t-shirts, cleaning supplies, um maybe some Havahar traps, uh we have a big cat problem acting air chocolatey. There's so many stray cats out there, um your dad, for instance.
Yeah.
Big.
They migrated from the north.
Yeah, he's got most of my traps out right now. I got like.
They migrate to my house too.
Yeah, I have a lot of people, and they take like three or four traps, and what the Kennybug Shelter does is, on certain days, if you catch a cat, you bring it down to a cage, they um neuter it, spay it, and then they bring it back and they can release it, so it doesn't keep breeding over and over again. Um it's actually a really nice program, it's all free, um on certain days, and I know your dad uses it quite a lot, so.
Well, yeah, they, they keep coming.
Yeah, they keep coming, but, yeah, we try to tackle as much as we can. And then just random dog food, cat food, um feeding pigs sometimes, like last year, we had, I had to feed um a pig for a month until the state could step in and take him on a foreclosure home. They were, they were getting all the animals, but I had to take care of that for a month. So the budget I'm asking for is uh twelve hundred bucks.
Same as last year?
Same.
Less, less than last year?
Yes, less, considering the dog box.
Yeah, that was a cage bit.
Yeah.
Good job.
So.
I think that uh that net thing would be a good idea.
I think it'd be great, I mean.
Like to try it.
Nothing's more frustrating than not being able to catch the animal, drove out there to go get for some.
You're gonna bring it in, demonstrate it on the street.
I don't know, for him to run across the road, it's gonna be.
Hey, John, you're gonna run across the road.
Yeah. Oh, get me, no, no.
How many calls do you get a month?
Oh, it uh totally depends, um today I could get eight phone calls and I could be dead for two weeks. Or I could get phone call, phone call, phone call, phone call, this, dog bites, cats, I mean, everything, pig moves. We had a five hundred pound pig on H Road, um it took like seven of us to catch, three hours. Um.
Really?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of help, the wings helped out quite a bit on that, um with the horse trailer, um.
Barkin' dogs?
Yeah, barkin' dogs, um yeah, cats, a bunch, I had a ferret um the other day, um everything.
Do you ever deal with uh wild dogs and coyotes?
Not coyotes, um I get calls, people do call me about coyotes. I talked to a trapper and I just relayed the message, if you use um coyote urine around where like foxes come and stuff around houses, um chicken coops and stuff, the, the foxes never come back, because the foxes, for whatever reason, they don't wanna den their pups next to that. So I just kinda relay the message to.
You don't deal with wild?
No, no, I don't touch any wildlife at all.
Yeah, the state law doesn't allow them to, it's only domestic animals.
Yeah, just to make, yeah, which is quite the rare thing.
Does the town, does the town charge anything to go get that pig, seven people?
Uh no, it's a salary, um salary basis that I'm on, um and they were.
If you had a loose dog, you, you'd have to pay a fine, wouldn't you?
Uh no, there's no fine, uh for like, nothing like that, no.
So if an animal is taken to the shelter, the, and then somebody retrieves their animal at the shelter, there is a fine So if an animal is taken to the shelter, the, and then somebody retrieves their animal at the shelter, there is a fine that the, that the dog owner would pay that is eventually mailed to the town. So if you take, um, Tom's dog to the vet, to the shelter and he goes and gets it, he's gonna pay a forty dollar impound fee, which turns around and comes to the town.
Eventually, if you had a repeat offender.
You could.
You would take it to the shelter because eventually you want to, right?
Yeah.
Just because of that, and that, that's what the fine would come.
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's a lot, sometimes there's a lot of steps to being able to do that. I mean, you just can't just walk up and just take somebody's dog and.
No, 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 it's just wandering free.
Oh, so, this is a gray area, is, um, they don't want, I'm not a, well, let's say a dog catcher. And then when we drive around the town for hours and hours and hours, looking for this ghost of a dog, so to speak. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to bring up the past.
He's talking about ghosts, the dog that made you.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't wanna make that, that happen, you know what I mean? If somebody calls and they have a dog and they keep, guy right there. Or for instance, I had a lady that she needed help. She didn't have a vehicle, she couldn't drive or whatever. Uh, the dog went over the neighbor's property and it wouldn't get close to us. That's exactly where the, this net launcher would come in. And it would get from like, I don't know, me to you, and then that's as far as it would go, and then it would just run back off into the woods. And I spent, spent probably longer than I showed up there, but we ended up getting the dog anyways and I got in my truck and we were able to get the lady back with the dog and see what's happening.
But what I'm saying is, if you have, say, somebody's dog ends up in my yard multiple times a week, okay, normally you'd wanna take them back to the owner, but over like say five times, you don't bring them back to the owner?
No, not after the second time.
No, well, that's what I mean.
Oh, yeah, like the first time, if I know whose it is and it's just a mistake, you know, whatever. And it happens day after day after day.
You take it away.
I'm going right to the shelter every time.
And that's why the dog tags are so important, you know, maybe he's got records of who owns what.
Yeah, and.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and longer that I do this, I'm getting more of a base of who owns what and who, who's who and who owns what dog, so. That, that makes it easy, but.
Good. Any other questions or?
So you're, you're comfortable with your budget?
Yeah, no, I'm good. I'm good. Until next time.
Keep us a good word.
Have a good night.
Um, next, we will have the budget presentation from our EMA director.
So had a few mates with way up here. Uh, his budget is, is very similar to the animal control officer. Um, he really, um, only has two lines to discuss with you and which are the mileage and the miscellaneous line. So, wanna go over those two?
This won't be as glamorous as Brandon's. I don't want to answer anybody yet, but. Yeah, the, the mileage, of course, these numbers, as you all know, um, this, I just took over, it'll be a year December fourth, so. Those baseline numbers obviously put in for this fiscal year, which makes sense. Um, mileage, what I did is I, I asked Lauren, of course, could you give me the numbers of what I've spent on mileage thus far? She broke it out in last fiscal year, the current one, and then the overall average. And it was at five hundred dollars, so the, uh, it was ninety-one dollars was the average for the whole time I've been here.
Per month?
Yeah. The current fiscal year is at seventy-seven, last fiscal year was at one oh two. So what I did is I picked a, a dollar figure of eighty dollars a month, um, based on those numbers and reality. I spend, most of my time is, is, is dealing and going with, um, various reasons to go to New York County. We're seeing management agency in Alfred quite a bit for, uh, I'm on three different teams slash parts of that organization and then also with the state. Um, so the eighty dollars made sense based on what Lauren gave me. That comes to nine sixty, so I raised it. I put in a thousand. Um, hopefully I don't lose that. And of course, obviously, I'm even.
For initiative, you put in for nine sixty.
Did I put nine sixty?
You put nine sixty.
I didn't even see what the heck I put in. I didn't wanna steal that for you.
Okay.
Told you it wasn't glamorous.
Alright, miscellaneous, he went up too.
Yeah, again, this was, this thousand dollars was a number that had to be picked, right? And I was, now, of course, if an emergency's declared, this doesn't matter. But that's gonna be an extreme situation. Most of the time, to me, preparation is everything. There's four phases, of course. Preparation, uh, the, the more we're prepared, the, uh, the quicker, the better the response will be, assisting Wayne and whoever else. The, uh, the recovery period will be better, obviously. And mitigation, which includes a lot of things that, um, that Will does, let's say, on the roads and stuff. But to me, mitigation is also part of preparation, either at the tail end or up front. So what I, what I found this year was, we waited till July first because I, there was things I wanted for the CERT members that we have and for the volunteers, meaning, and that's primarily additional shelter items for the school. And I did one order in like July fifth or something and I was seventy-three dollars over just getting a couple of things for the shelter, really, pillows and a couple of small things and, and I was seventy-three dollars over in, in July. So basically, I'm broke until next year. Um, so I'm like, well, that's not a good situation to be in. Um, and, and a good example, because this is a dynamic thing, and, and I came with a good example, because I just got these today when I got here. And me, what I mean by dynamic is, Cassie gave, um, I requested a CPR class from my volunteers. And she gave that to us on December third across the street, uh, which was very good. And at that class, I learned that these different types of masks and such for infants and adults are definitely a necessity for our volunteers. You know, especially in the shelter or right here, and we're gonna have issues this winter, I have no doubt, we have the warming centers. These are not expensive, but they're, they're critical. And I pointed it out to the county EMA for the CERT team, so they're gonna be doing the same thing. So that's a good example of learning things, because I went to a, had training class for the volunteers, and that's what I mean by dynamic. So I don't wanna be next July, uh, fifth again, broke. Um, well, the, the training I've had, just an example. Um, we've had, the county gave us two great training classes on sheltering here. Um, Cassie gave us the CPR, which is a same class people pay for to get certified. And the Red Cross is giving us a sheltering class here on December sixth. It hasn't cost us a penny. And, and I won't, and it's not gonna. So we're not, we're not wasting any money. The things I decide to get, again, I'm learning as we go along, uh, the different organizations, I mean, like, I do the CERT team. And here, here's something to remind everybody of our town. We, we now have fifteen, fifteen volunteers at the EMA. Uh, out of the forty people on the county's CERT team, uh, ten of those are acting residents. That's twenty-five percent. So there's twenty-nine towns in New York County. Our little town provides twenty-five percent of the county's CERT team. Nine of those people are also my volunteers. So guess what? If there's, if the S hits the fan, we have ten people on the CERT teams with all this training that live here, okay? This is very important preparation, obviously. Joyce is, of course, on my volunteers, which I appreciate. Uh, so, so that's, that's what I was like, I don't wanna get in a situation again where I'm, where I, you know, to me, I realize it's, it's a hundred percent increase, since we do percentages and I, I agree. But we were starting basically from a, a zero number or a reference that, that didn't have any meaning yet, you know? So that's why it's two thousand.
Any questions here?
That makes sense.
Perfect sense.
Anybody have any questions?
Told you it wasn't glamorous.
And you're happy with that number?
Nope. Say yes, Phil.
Well, no, I, I'm just, I'm just, well, I'm, I'm looking at it, it's a pretty small number, for what we're gonna do here, and, uh, just.
Well, God.
If there's an emergency, it'll be big enough, we'll have to deal with that, but.
Right, these are things.
We'll, 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 we'll contingency fund if anything comes up.
That financing.
I didn't ask you any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Phil, and it's hard to leave.
Thanks, Phil.
That's for you.
You've done so much.
Um, with that being said, so no further questions, we will move on to the cemetery budget presentation.
Sorry you were last, Wayne, somebody had to be.
It's okay, that's my first time.
He's the new chair for committee, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Why, Michel was, man?
Michel.
And so the chair, we have just the one line, right, for ten thousand, they're gonna give them a breakdown and it should be in their package as well.
Yep. Uh, so it's the same amount as last year, ten thousand. Uh, this year, next year, we're gonna be buying two hundred and fifty US flags, uh, fifty firefighter flags, nine flag holders, ten of the cleaner that we use. Ten, I think they're jugs.
That's stone cleaner?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, we are looking at replacing five headstones. And the biggest ticket is tree removal.
Is that for maintenance, just to protect the stones or?
Yeah, there's a lot of the ones that we're cleaning that are just, that's definitely stuff that we can't do or they're dangerous, you know, I mean, they would break. So they would, not a good situation, need equipment for that. Um, and we were out to bid.
Have you called up, got prices on these spots or you just rough, give a rough?
I need, we've put out to a couple, um, this year, and we actually had a hard time with that of getting, cause we're supposed to get three. And we would only get like two and then we kinda chase one, I can't remember who it was, um, that said that they would get back to us and then we just never kinda hear, which I know fall time, they're busy doing other stuff anyways.
Well, we have a tree cleared that we.
We do. Well, yeah, right, so when we go out to bid normally, it's for all of the departments and stuff, so it was, um, Fall Guys who just mentioned, yeah.
But, yeah, that's, that's.
What about the headstones? What, how do you decide what headstones and?
That's a good question.
I'm just curious, like, I'm just thinking like if I had, if I purchased, if I purchased a headstone for somebody, you know, and you, you changed it, I mean, I don't know how I feel about that.
Well, usually is, if, I'll try to say.
Are these old ones?
Some of them are old, some of them, you know, just if, if a tree did come down or them hang down and snapped it. Um, you know, first you try to contact the family to see if they want to replace it. Um, if it's a veteran one, I know the veteran ones, we can attempt, I think Steve told me one time, there's like a, some program where you can go for.
Reimburse it, yeah.
To try and get them to just send you a generic one like you see at our, it would not be as ornate and pretty as the old ones.
Are all the replacements for veterans or some of them for non-veterans?
Uh, we, I mean, we take care of veteran and non, all three towns, so.
So is this situation with the family just no longer maintains the several?
We might not be able to track down a, a living descendant of.
Okay, so you just, I get it, okay.
Um, and there's a lot of busted headstones, so we're not by any means.
There must be quite a backlog, yeah. It must be, you're only doing how many of them?
Five.
I'm doing five and there's a lot.
There's a lot, okay.
Is that a common practice of towns to replace headstones?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not really sure. Um, my experience with this committee, uh, typically in the past, has just been being a grunt and showing up when they call. So now I'm in charge, so I'm learning, um, all the, all the different processes, um, but we have a handful of people that, that are.
Yeah, I think the important thing, at, at least for me when I thought about this, is this is basically the materials cost. And what the town is getting is the labor in time. You know, these people are out here doing all this work. There's no charge for any of that. And, um, so it's, it's God's work. Thank you.
These is.
My two cents worth.
The is, a handful of cemeteries that are entrusted, the town's responsible for, um, maintaining throughout the year.
Yep. I think those ones are the ones that contain veterans. A majority of them anyway.
Well, you very well could have veterans in them, but the difference is we're supposed to maintain the whole cemetery. Okay, according to, does, does the cemetery committee do that part for those particular cemeteries?
Uh, we definitely.
Do vacants on them every year?
Yep, we have a list of, um.
The trust?
All the known, I, I think there is a list of all the different trusts and things. Um, I have to ask some of the other people that have been doing this longer.
And the town report too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe, uh, cause it has been talked in the slotting, uh, about joining these funds. And I would just like to have the breakdown and the information on it.
I was telling him that they're in the, uh, town report and the audit that cemetery council listed there, and there is interest money that can be used outside of this ten thousand to help maintain them. Which is information that Steve, the previous chair should have as well, but we're happy to spend some time going on what we did.
Sure.
Are there any other questions pertaining to the budget?
I, actually, I just got a quick question, uh, for like, just routine maintenance, mowing and cleanups, is that all voluntary or is that a municipal line?
Uh, it's all voluntary. We, we, we have, like I said, we have, I have a binder that was given to me talking about, you know, it's got listed in there alphabetically, all, every cemetery that we know of so far. And we, when we have our meetings, we kinda go through all that and we, ones that we've already improved and that are needing just mowing or whatever, we, we try to hit those throughout the summer, um, as frequently as we can. And, and take care of that. And we had, uh, I think there was one high schooler this year that volunteered, um, to help maintain a couple. Um, so we're always looking for, for.
Help.
Either homeowners that the, the cemetery's on, and, and we try to ask to say, hey, can you mow it every once in a while or whatever, um, to help us with that, cause there are so many.
So can people reach out to you to adopt the cemetery to help out?
Absolutely.
So when you guys go mow, you're using your own mower, gas is up, are you charging for that stuff?
Um, I can read first, I would. I think if we wanted to, we can, but a lot of times.
They don't, but we don't. Most don't, but we have one or two that sometimes turns them in and we're happy to reimburse them.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
I guess that's the point I was trying to make. The cost of proceeding is really a small fraction of the effort that's going in to maintaining these stuff. It's basically all volunteer work.
Yeah, I mean, when we organize, I think we only had four or five organized big cleanups this year. Um, and that's not including other ones that, you know, sometimes it's just me and Steve and we'll, we'll tell each other, oh, yeah, we're only gonna go from nine to noon or something like that and we're there till dark.
Cleaning those grave sites, those stones is quite a, quite a job. And to do it right and to do the number that you have to do is young as work and you have.
And then we have volunteers that are trained on fixing them. We have to dig up the base and reset it properly and get it upright so that it doesn't lean too far and then they break and, um, or need to be replaced if they break that up.
Amy's still helping? Is she doing a lot of that?
Um, she's not, I haven't seen her for a while. Um, she's got a little stuff.
You guys still got Ken? Does Ken still help out with the grave stones?
Ken, uh, Ken Allen?
Yeah.
Uh, yep, he's still, yep.
Uh, it's a plug we should work on, we can all kind of campaign for adopting the cemetery.
Thank you so much for the work that you folks do. Um, is, any further questions on the budget or is that? Well, thank you very much for coming through.
I'll give you a list, we'll talk about that, and I'll show you where you get some other money for the cemetery.
And I may have a list in that binder that I was giving.
But you may not know that you can pull the money off of those accounts, so that's.
I think we did talk about it at one of our meetings, so I'm aware of it, I just don't know with the ins and outs of exactly the breakdown of what we have.
Stop putting it on, help out.
Well, thank you to everyone who came out to do your presentations and Tom and Jenna's are pretty, helping get things ready. Um, next, under new business, we're gonna move to a few more information requests.
Uh, this is from William Wazunyak. How do they do? Thank you. Uh, Iron Tail's math scanning permits, uh, all dates and times, total number of twenty twenty-five permits. Also, Iron Tail's conditional use hours of operations allowed. So we'll work on getting that over to him.
I love his email like this.
Mister, oh, yeah.
We won't read it.
So we'll get that.
Mr. Skidoo.
So that is all the half of that. We're gonna over to him right now.
And that is all that we have for new business. Under pending, we have transfer station, capital budget plans, um, two, Article forty-three, uh, advocacy statistics, I drive and I have a road, and lawn care beds. Um, and with that being said.
Most of those are on next week's agenda, perhaps.
Yeah, the only one is the Article forty-three, I mean, I don't think it may be a meeting.
Lawn care will be.
Lawn care is definitely. Um, we have an update on the capital budget plan. I mean, transfer station is up to you guys. We've got some other miscellaneous items.
Okay.
Do we have a date, David? For another Article forty-three for, uh, road name?
I haven't heard yet. I haven't heard, but I told them that we couldn't put anything forward, but obviously they moved, so it just didn't have enough people last night.
And with that, we will be moving into public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Okay, motion?
A motion, she's adjourned at seven thirty-five, second.
All in favor?
David Fish.
We adjourn.